Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Stand here.
Here.
Present.
Here. How many don't have public comments? Has anyone signed up yet on the screen? All right, we're your first person to swing off and agree to the rules of public comment.
All right, identify yourself by name and I want to address. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Individuals may not reserve or allow transfer their time to another speaker. Specific personnel matters must be initiated at, cannot be, must not be initiated at a public meeting. Speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Specify the nature of your remarks. Speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment shall not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Any, uh, anyone who would like to present a powerful presentation for public comment has to prevent, uh, present the presentation twenty-four hours in advance for review by the staff or approach. All questions shall be directed to the chairman, who will at his discretion solicit the response from the appropriate staff member. All right, first person is Tommy Burke.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is it on?
It's on. It's on.
Hello, oh yeah. Good evening. Tonight I would like to bring to your attention policy J H C L dash R. The Wellness Policy. Adopted January of two thousand and eighteen and revised again in August of two thousand and twenty-two. An article found in the Pediatric Therapy's website states, "A near jog on a treadmill can help students solve problems ten percent more efficiently. In fact, the more active children and adolescents are, the better they perform academically." Physical activity has an import, has an impact on cognitive skills, attitudes, and academic behaviors, all of which are important components of improving academic performance. The CDC recommends participating in at least sixty minutes daily, or a hundred and fifty minutes per week in elementary, and two hundred and twenty-five minutes per week at the high school and middle school level all year long. I'm not sure what data was used when the School Health Advisory Board worked on this policy for presentation, but our numbers are way below the suggested numbers in elementary school. And it does show in our test scores. On page fourteen of the policy, it reads, "All elementary students will receive sixty to eighty-nine minutes of P E per week throughout the school year. On average, they receive forty minutes." Now, before you get all excited, they do receive recess. And, um, all elementary schools will receive twenty minutes of recess on all days during the school year. That's on page fifteen of the same policy. At this point, this policy should have been through at least one triennial review. One would think that the school health coordinator would have picked up on the fact that we're noncompliant, and with our scheduling, we will continue to be noncompliant. The shifting of time from physical education and physical activity in general to more academic subjects has shown no benefit in our test scores, yet studies do show that when there's an increase in physical activity during the school day, there are positive results in our academic performance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Chris Porter Newman.
Uh, Christopher Newman, two-three-two-one-one Cord House Road. I'm here to represent the Town Council of Akimak and also Drum and Town Preservation. We're a group of people who believe in historic preservation and our history and our heritage. And I also feel like I represent the thousands of children and many, many teachers who have gone to and, and have worked at Akimak Primary School. That's why I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of this beautiful building, built in nineteen thirty-two. And our group of people, we're, we believe the school can be restored and preserved, and we're asking the board to do that rather than to demolish the building. As I said, the, the school was built in nineteen thirty-two, at its work time, for the world, uh, the Great Depression. In a few years Adolf Hitler would be invading Poland, and shortly around the same time, the Japanese would be invading China. At the same time, the Russian Soviets Communist Party was killing millions and millions of people in Ukraine. And it's just similar, that situation is, is happening today. Just ask the board, uh, just please, uh, let us know what's going on. We haven't heard a thing in ten months. We came in April, and we were told at that time there would be an assessment to discover if the school could or could not be preserved. We feel that it can be, uh, from the original assessment, which seemed to be about the same amount, to demolish the school or to restore the school. Please be a voice for art and beauty and our heritage and our history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. And I will let you know that I just got an email this afternoon. The contract has been awarded for the structural feasibility assessment. They have given us a timeframe that this assessment should be completed by March sixth.
Could you tell us who that group will be?
Oh, okay, there, I gotta go back and find that. That's what's in the...
It's, um, W J E, but I can't remember where it all starts with. Maybe it's a...
But I can just, I can just speak now, glad to be here.
It's from Paul Sturbridge.
W J E is what the figure of the mission is.
But I just got that this afternoon, um, that information. Next is... Trish Hubbard.
Trish Hubbard with Horrible Handwriting.
No problem.
Good evening, my name is Trish Hubbard. I'm just a concerned citizen. I live at two-three-two-three-one Cord House Avenue in Akimak, so I'm right down the street from the school. I don't represent anyone in particular except myself. However, I know a lot of people in the neighborhood are very concerned about the same issues that Mr. Newman just raised. It has been quite some time. When we get an answer like was just given, it's welcome information, but at the same time, I don't think we should have to ask for the name of the company that's going to be consulted. The information that company has been given, the information that, uh, will be sought by the board from this company, in other words, the particulars are not there for us. Whether or not that's going to happen, I don't know, but I'm here this evening because I feel it should be that it is the, basically, the right of the persons that live in that area to understand what will happen to this building, not just from a historical perspective, but also from a safety, noise, and other areas of concern that people have a right to get an answer to. So, that's the reason I'm here this evening. I'm hoping this board will do more than give us little bits and pieces of information when they're pressed to do so. I'm hoping that the board will give us advanced information with all of the details necessary for us to evaluate what the board is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to say, this is information, just, and we've been, uh, and the request has been, uh, get someone to, uh, do this structural survey, and it's been several months before we have gotten a response that, that it's just an award. It's not because you're here tonight, we just received that, uh, this afternoon. I, I just received it once, and as a matter of fact, I haven't even got a chance to share it with the rest of the board, because we just, uh, it just came from our sources. Not because you're here...
And I can certainly appreciate that, but going forward, I, I really strongly feel that the communication needs to be there such that we would know that information even, that you did not have an answer before now, because it has been once.
Anyway, but we have not, but I'd say, the take it was a process, and we just reached that point in the process.
Perhaps it will be possible at some point, I don't want to run over my time, but perhaps it will be possible at some point for you to choose a liaison in the community so that you can keep the community, maybe Mr. Newman who...
He can always feel free to contact me anytime, and we, we can make sure, you know, we can give what we have, you know, that's our thing, is the only information we receive has just been all from the rest of the man.
Okay, thank you very much.
This Megan Clark, right? Who's question?
What, what, just the angle, could you bring the angle a little bit down, just towards your mouth more? It's pointed upwards towards like, oh, yeah, there you go.
Good evening, my name's Megan Curry, I live at two-fourty-twenty East Point Road, um, in Ancock. And I'm here to speak for just a few minutes about the calendar changes, um, that were adopted at the last meeting. First, um, I would urge you to incorporate a liberal excused absence policy with your students, um, on those days. So, the Akimak County Excused Absences Policy is more stringent than the state of Virginia requires, um, and so there is room for additional excused absences for your students. And so my hope is that should families have travel plans based on the original approved calendar, then you would not penalize students as a result. But second, I do feel like I need to share my feelings about, um, the calendar changes. We rely on the elected school board and the administrators it employs to know and execute the requirements set forth by the Department of Education, and from where I stand, there was a failure to do that. The county failed to communicate well with its stakeholders. Neither the official Facebook nor the official Twitter addressed the calendar changes. The hard copy letter that was sent home took more than a week to reach, reach students in some cases. Regarding the letter, it does not address the January teacher workdays being canceled. One must use inference to understand that they are rescheduled. Additionally, the letter states that these changes were made for the good of the students, but the truth is that there was a failure at administrative level, and the teachers, students, and families are forced to pay, pay the price for that mistake. Your constituents deserve to know why the high school schedule needed to be extended by over fifty hours, which is almost two weeks of instruction in addition to the days that were made, added back after the makeup days. After reading several documents on the Virginia T O E website, I have questions about why a waiver could not be pursued, but I understand that you all did plenty of work to find out, um, the, the right way to come under compliance. But the execution of the schedule change was rushed and poorly executed. Students were unable to access the schools at the times posted. Traffic was a major issue, and communication with families was delayed. We just expect better for our children, and we hope that our school board will do better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure, they, bring that again.
Sarah Schmidt.
Yes. Sarah, Sarah.
Oh, yeah.
I have time, I'm ready.
Yeah, they definitely have a sample, are they? And repeat the name again.
My name is Sarah Schmidt, I live at, uh, four-zero-two-two Captain's Corridor. I'm here to talk about the calendar changes. A one word that I have in my head from hearing everybody else's speak tonight is transparency. I don't feel as though everything that has happened concerning the calendar changes, nothing has really been transparent. We, as students, I speak for a lot of students, a lot of teachers, a lot of people in the community, when I say that they are very angry, not because a mistake was made, because it is of course a mistake, but what happened and why is this the reason that, like, why is this the reason, how are we fixing it? We would just like to know the reasoning behind what happened and what we are doing to fix it. I know a lot of people are very angry, and a lot of people are very critical, but I think it would be more important that we were transparent and that we all, as a body, understand why this has happened and how we are correcting it. And as I stated, a mistake was made, mistakes happen, they happen all the time, and nobody's mad at that, but it's just the transparency, like, we need to know, well, not really need, but we would like to know why things happen and how they are corrected, and why that correction is specifically made. It's just kind of like, I don't really have an example, but that's mainly my point. Thank you.
Excellent, Miss Emily Jones.
My name is Emily Jones, I'm twenty-eight, two-three-two Beacon Lane, Norfolk, Virginia. I have kids attending Nando High School, Nando Middle School, and Pummeteak Elementary, so I'm well vested in this, um, system. I, I want to second what these people have said about the calendar changes, I agree with those. I also believe that the changes only affected the high schools, not the middle school or the elementary school. And, um, personally, I would feel that the elementary school and the middle school should not have to attend school on the days that have been given as extra days for the high school. I also want to mention, uh, at Pummeteak, the playground equipment was torn down recently. My son said it was the worst day of his life, so I just want to nudge that project into hopefully completing before too long. Also, my oldest daughter broke her leg earlier this year, and she was trying to use the elevator, and there were not enough elevator keys in order for her to use them, so she had to have somebody from administration come help her open up the elevator every single time she needed to go up and down, and I just feel like that shouldn't have happened. That was a strain on administration and really an easy fix. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. If anyone feels assigned, would like to address the board?
Good evening, my name is Toni Yank, my address is twenty-eight-two-zero-two Bloxham Road. I'd like to address the, the calendar issue as well. Um, I have a child at Arcadia High School, um, who is now, just turned sixteen and is driving. So, for me, it's a safety concern. I've talked to her multiple times about how fast to drive and everything, but sometimes kids get up a little later, and trying to be at school at seven fifteen could cause an issue. She also has chronic illness, which, um, I'll probably be standing before you again, because she has more than twenty-plus absences. They've all been covered due to doctor's notes and everything, but again, this is something else that concerns me as far as the calendar changes and the time. She wakes up in the morning probably about four-thirty, five o'clock, start getting ready, because that time also includes some personal time that she has to spend in the restroom, you know, because of her issue, prior to getting dressed and getting ready to get out of the house. So, I just hope that, you know, it'll be taken into consideration if our children are running a little late, and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do like to share that the board, uh, will be studying more of the calendar issue and what happened, uh, we have not had the opportunity to discuss it ourselves, but that will be something we will be looking at.
All right, the next item on their agenda is Pummeteak Elementary School.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, tonight, uh, we want to present to you a couple of things, uh, positive things that are happening at Pummeteak Elementary School. Twenty, somebody spoke about the wellness policy tonight, and that's really a top four agenda. One of the main things the state has been emphasizing, and is emphasized by our own administration, I know this is a big thing with Ms. Gordon and with Dr. Paul, uh, and that is kids' emotional welfare, coming out of COVID, um, coming through this, this time when they shut down, that was like no other time that I've ever experienced. As a matter of fact, I, I think it was the strangest time I've ever experienced. One of the things the state really emphasized was, was the need to really nurture and be more tuned in to kids' emotional needs, not just their academic needs. So, I have Miss Payne with me tonight, and of course, when she gets, uh, when she gets something like this, she's the Energizer Bunny, that's my nickname for her, and, um, she just grabs hold of it and rolls with it, and she's going to speak tonight, by the way, she told me she's very nervous to do this, she should never do that. You can never do that, because I, I will not keep it a secret. But she's going to, she's going to speak to the Caring Community Program, that she really has been the one that has, has put this into place, and it's made this happen, and it's a fantastic thing. So, turn to you, Miss Payne, start.
Right, and, and Miss Payne, you recognize, we're nervous too.
So, I was given the heads up that I can take this off, so I'm not confined to one space, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so first, this is very exciting, and to be only confined to a few minutes, I apologize, I'm going to try to stick to it, because it's been very exciting here at Pummeteak, but first I want to, um, thank those at Pummeteak who were able to come tonight, but also to our committee members, if you're here, if you please stand, Martha Johnson, KJ Bentley, Jennifer Lee, Amanda Lawrence, Shannon Sturgis, and Sharman Horton from the Eastern Shore Community Service Boards. So, thank you. This has been, um, yeah, see, I'm getting nervous, I'm not excited, though. Okay, so we started this, um, back in April, the Community Service Board reached out and, and asked us if we'd be interested in taking a, I'm supposed to be talking to you and everybody, so sorry. If we would take a, um, professional development about trauma-informed schools. Well, with all of the news and negativity and school violence and just tragedy in schools, we already had a spark flying. We wanted to do something, but proactively, not reactively. So, we took this training and really, sparks just flew, and ideas started flowing, and in May, we started planning on how can we help children, help ourselves, and help our community to be more kind? And really, that was, that was the basis of it. How do we teach each other to be kind, to one another, to each other, to the adults? How do we make that happen? So, here's how we did it, okay? We're still a work in progress, there's still things we want to do, um, but we're headed in the right direction, and it's exciting to be there. Okay, so this umbrella has a whole lot of, um, things that we have done in the past, things that we're doing now. We have social-emotional learning, we have Olveas that the county adopted, brought back. Ooh, that's okay, I'll keep going. We have PBIS, which was something we practiced in the past, and we still have some components of it. And we also have, um, trauma-informed schools. So, we were trying to figure out how to take everything that we have been trained with and everything that we know, and come up with this big idea of how we can help our children be more kind and treat each other with respect, and at the end of the day, not create the violence and tragedy that we're seeing in schools. I'm going to tell you, we still don't have the best name for it, but what we came up with is our Caring Community, because at the end of the day, that's really what we want, a caring community. So, this relies on building relationships. We need to build relationships with each other as adults in the building, building relationships with our students that are within our community, but the one component that we found that we needed to work on was allowing students to have relationships with students. We're really good at building relationships with our students as adults, but they didn't necessarily have the opportunity to learn how to communicate with one another, to learn how to respect one another, and be kind to one another. So, there's our mission. We work our, um, school schedule around a morning meeting time where everybody in the building has, um, twenty minutes at the beginning of the day to have a morning meeting. Now, there's a whole book, Responsive Classroom, and there's a whole, um, pattern that their day goes through, but I'm going to be honest, we're all in different spots with our comfort, we're all in different spots of the things that we do with our children, but we are headed in the right direction. Students in our classrooms know each other's names, they greet one another, they come to school excited to share something about them personally. Some of our students actually, I heard a story today where one student, um, he doesn't share a lot throughout the whole day, but during morning meeting, he is so excited to share something personal about himself. So, we're really building students, students up and giving them those skills that they need to communicate with each other and to be kind with. You hear a theme here? In case you didn't see my shirt, you could be nothing else in the world, be kind. So, these are just a few pictures of our morning meeting. Every morning meeting looks different, they might be seated together, they might be around the perimeter, um, they are truly enjoying the moment that they have to share with one another and greet each other. Some of the topics may be, um, naming your feeling, telling another student why you're angry, instead of using your hands, your feet, your body. It has really had an impact, and I don't have numbers, and I meant to, but it's really having an impact on the number of discipline issues we're having. I had a, an adult conversation with two fifth graders the other day, um, you could be mad at them, and that's okay, but here's how we work through it. It's just, it's very impactful, we are nowhere where we need to be, but we are absolutely headed in the right direction, because we at Pummeteak have created our schedule because we value our students, we value relationships, and most of all, we value kindness, and we teach that each and every day. So, just in case you need a friendly reminder there, that we're all about themes in elementary school, so here's a kind of our. Dr. Patterson didn't know about this, sorry. You are welcome. You are welcome. Does anyone have any questions about this portion of our morning meeting, building kindness?
Are there any questions? Well, we do want to say, it's awesome, uh, this is what we're about to say. But we do really appreciate it, and we like the idea of being kind to each other. That is a key problem in, in schools that conflict, and people don't have the work to accomplish.
Can I share one thing that I really want to share that I forgot to share? Sorry. One thing that Dr. Patterson and I did at the beginning of the school is we knew how important building relationships were, so we looked at our entire staff, everybody, custodian, cafeteria, IAs, everybody. We went through our entire list to see, is there anybody who we don't know that well? Is there anyone that we still need to build a relationship with? It has been intentional relationship building within our building. We also, mid-year, are doing the same thing with our teachers to our students. We want to make sure that every student in the building has the opportunity to have a relationship with an adult, somebody knows them, between our teachers, our support staff. So, I also, I challenge you as community members, I challenge you as the board, central office, to do that with the people you work with. We will be so successful in this community if we value each other, respect each other, and show kindness by building a relationship. Oh, no, I'm not, sorry.
My, my, I turned it over.
I'm so excited when I hit the button.
I thought you were trying to get her off stage.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask for a candle bar.
Thank you, there we go. All right, I, I was excited there, I, I've been to many of these things, and, uh, when I ask questions, I've never had somebody from the audience raise their hand, so, I guess that's not perfect, a lot of them. Uh, okay, so the next thing that, uh, by, by the way, is she doing outstanding job? So, the next thing I just wanted to mention, last year, we received a tremendous grant from the Cowrith and Junior, sorry, it was the Cowrith Senior Foundation, I believe, it's in honor of the Cowrith's, uh, Junior's father. And, um, as you know, all the schools were outfitted with STEM labs, and we basically designated a space, we set up a STEM lab, and the problem was, we had all this neat stuff, are you going to put it on? The problem is, we got all this neat stuff, but there was really no way to implement it into the program in a strategic, pattern, continuous way. So, what I did this year, uh, is I contacted one of our instructional aides, we're bringing is I contacted one of our instructional aides, we're bringing her up right now. She's welcome. Miss Sawyer, come on up here. She does not have a speaking bar. Although you might. And Miss Sawyer is IAs at Punggatig. She's been with us for a while, and she's also gone through, she came to us through the Community College, has an associate's degree, and did some, read across the Barrett, I think, was one of the things you did in our school for a while. Anyway, so I made her a STEM lab coordinator in the school. And what we did is, she actually works in the STEM lab. You've got to have one person take care of all that stuff, to make sure that they know what, I mean, they sent us a lot of stuff. And there's no way you could say the teachers get the STEM lab and do something. They don't even have time to research all the different things they can do in there. And so, I put her in charge of that, and then challenged the teachers, at a certain rate every month, they were to sign up for the STEM lab and coordinate a lesson through Miss Sawyer for the STEM lab. I would let you know right now, on the top of my head, we're probably operating our STEM lab slash science lab. STEM, STEM, yes, STEM lab slash science lab, about three hours a day, every day, at that school. And so, I'd like the school board to know about that, plus my thanks to Miss Sawyer, who has done a magnificent job, and really, she's a real leader of the school. She took control of this area, and has really pushed it and worked really closely with those teachers. So, kids are getting hands-on projects now. It's not just all sitting in the classroom. Want to really emphasize this, because I know a lot of the people that we have in the IA level positions are through a lot of the grants that came through during the COVID time. And I think that the only way to run something like this is for the school board to maybe in the future assure that there's always somebody available that's actually assigned to that position. And, you know, we hear some complaints from others that they're not able to do it as much in those schools. So, that is one, one way to do it. So, thank you, Miss Sawyer. Just wanted to introduce you to everybody. Give her a round of applause. All right, and I'll leave you with, the last thing I want to do is, I knew one parent actually mentioned how devastated her child was. The playground was wrecked. Well, the playground's completely torn up down there, and I want to just give a, give a real shout out to school board member Gary Reese. Mr. Reese has really taken this project on and has been there with the playground replacement project from the beginning, has been at the school several times, is really pushing this one. And it's going well. I assure that parent that the playground, it's moved faster, actually, moved faster than I thought it would. And the playground, it's my understanding, as soon as it's all completely ripped up, that we should be getting some stuff in very soon here. So, a lot of that stuff is older than the school, or as old as the school, so it was time for it to go. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Reese, for all your hard work on, on getting some action on the playgrounds in the county. All right, does anybody have any questions for me?
I'm at the end of your presentation.
There it is.
I like your colored photos. I love your kindness program. I'm sure that came in very handy after the bus accident, and hopefully you got to use those tools. But I was wondering, do you have any data that you could share with us, any things that you're working on, any areas of improvement with the learning loss that you could address?
Well, I wasn't, I didn't bring any data with me. I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to just talk about what we're doing, but we have a whole school improvement plan, and it's actually.
What are your areas that you're most in need of addressing?
I'd say the three areas are always going to be reading, math, and this, this year, based on last year's scores, which were not very good, science. I think that, you know, my experience being there and seeing COVID and seeing some of the reductions that are directly attributable to the COVID shutdown, tell us that we are a certain level behind where we were. For instance, we were hitting on the science scores in the SOLs, we were hitting right around 77 to 85%, somewhere in that area for three or four years in a row. And last year, the actual raw score pass rate was about a 53. And the reason we made it for remediation was on three-year average. And we're seeing the same things in reading. I mean, they've got a growth model in place that helps a lot. They're, the state's obviously accommodating the systems to make this recovery. But, you know, we are seeing that, I can't put a miracle number on it for the whole school or the state, but we're seeing that dip in where our kids are based on, on the shutdown. And we're doing a lot with trying to make sure we're emphasizing the reading, making sure that we're emphasizing the small group instruction, we're trying to emphasize pulling out of the tier-three kids to get them the, the defined instruction that they need from specialists. So, you know, those are some of the things that we're doing. If, did you have any other questions on specifically?
Do you have an after-school program?
Yes.
And about how many children are in that after-school program?
Right now, we targeted, I'm trying to remember, ma'am, I have, I think, four teachers right now. Started out with five, and we probably only have 35 to 40 kids right now after school. Then we're going to be going after 108, if we can maximize for the Saturday program. A lot of times with that, we'll target more, but there's not as much participation. I probably only get about half participation, off the top of my head, of the students that we invite. But our goal will be to invite all tier-two and tier-three students. As a matter of fact, we went over that data today. And if we can get that, then we'll be well on our way. If they, if they agree to it, we'll be well, grades three through five, we'll be well on our way to getting them that other enrichment. And hats off, hats off to those who propose that Saturday program. I think that is going to help, and the data is clear that that type of program is a lot more valuable than the after-school programs.
Thank you.
Yes? Anybody else?
Very questions, very, very, very great presentation. Before I go to the next item, we'd like to welcome Mr. Buehlmann for the Board's advice, for his presence tonight, and we welcome him. I have 4.01, approval of a meeting that you had an opportunity to reveal. Are there any questions? Hearing none by the members concerned with the plan minutes approved. 5.01, are there vouchers? Are there any questions? Hearing none by the vouchers, we're quite different now, still. All right. I have 6.01, financial report.
Good evening. A couple of things I wanted to say, of course, went into the federal programs report, is that minimum wage increased on January 1st, and we had to make some contract adjustments, and those are on the personnel list tonight, to make sure that we were compliant with minimum wage. We are also proposing to raise the after-school rate to $40 an hour for teachers, in order to try to get teachers out to, to participate in that program. Our transportation department went under an audit, which last, which was on December 14th, and the results were, and I'm going to read from Mr. Robison, they were impressed with our driver's handbooks, bus tracking system, and overall paperwork compliance. They suggested that we scan everything and have it sent to the cloud in order to streamline the process. On the school level, three things needed to be followed for legal protection, so this will be a change for next year. Number one, all students must be given a copy of the bus rules and regulations, and have a parent or guardian provide a signature that they are in receipt of that, so that will go out at the beginning of school. That's going to be pretty challenging to collect all of them, but we're going to make an attempt. Number two, schools must comply with the line, the loading and unloading diagrams on file with VDOE. And number three, all students must be given training on proper bus behavior, and a record of the training must be on file with the bus shop, which is going to be another challenge. But overall, the audit was very good, because they're, they're looking into accounting and paperwork and, and maintenance and all that type of thing. But those were the three suggestions. Child Nutrition Services had a federal review today, so I'll probably be bringing you an update on that next meeting. On our federal programs, we are waiting approval on amendment for federal migrant, Title 1A, Title 4 and 5. We need to amend Title 2. And on the second page, with all of the CARES monies, the November reimbursements have been prepared, and I will be reviewing them this week, and they will be submitted, and that will catch that up to date. They're through October prior to this. So, are there any questions on the, or anything that I talked about in the federal programs?
Any questions?
So, as we discussed at the last meeting about the timeline and how there was an issue with the timeline, Mr. Holland and I did meet with the county administrator, and we've adjusted the calendar as such. We will be holding a special meeting next Tuesday as well, when you'll receive the superintendent's funding request, and you will make recommendations, I think that you will receive the budgets that I sent out last week. If there are any questions or issues, which of course you can bring them up tonight as well. And then we will have our public hearing, as we always do, on the workshop meeting in February. But because of the way the calendar falls, we will need to have a special meeting on February 14th. And that is in order to approve the budget after public hearing. It's got to be seven days. So, that's two months in a row with three meetings, I understand. But the county was fine with us presenting at the end of the month, but we would be probably the very last ones presenting, and we did not think that's where we wanted to be. So, this is what we're recommending to be the budget calendar, if you all choose to accept it.
So, you're saying there's a meeting, you want to have a meeting next Tuesday?
Yes. We, we have had three meetings in January for a very long time. The new thing is three meetings in February. Moving on to the next two slides, you will have this last meeting as well, so there's nothing new on that. Those are comparative state revenues. And then going to the fourth slide, which is increases, decreases, and expenditures. So, if revenues increase or decrease, the corresponding programs have to have that increase or decrease, and that, that directly affects expenditures. So, you have to look at program-specific revenues, such as at-risk. So, if at-risk actually went up $35,000 as a funding, which is on the first slide, you have to spend that much more on at-risk funding. So, that's not discretionary expenditures that you can have. You have to have that specific to the program. So, this slide addresses all the changes that directly affect our expenditures. The biggest one being school construction. We've, we've talked about this. This was a one-time allotment from the state that we're actually allowed to carry over two fiscal years beyond this year. So, that was a one-time, so that is money that we do not have to spend on, in our operating budget. And we have previously discussed a, an auxiliary gym at Mandua High School, as well as a gym at Punggatig, to, similar to what is at Kegate. And that's a big, that's a big reason for this change on this slide. Moving to the next slide, I just take the totals on the previous slide, and in talking, when Mr. Holland and I spoke with Mike Mason at our monthly meeting, previously, I had told you that they had said to expect no increase in local revenues. He has seen an increase in growth, and we are to expect approximately $400,000 increase. So, that means when you take into account the decrease in, in state revenues, however offset by the reduction in expenditures that we don't have to spend for specific programs, and you add the local revenues, we have just over $1 million of additional things that we can fund in our operating budget. Okay, and then moving to the final slide, these are some of our priorities, and we'll be glad to listen to other priorities or concerns. The 5% compensation supplement, if we do not get this, we do not get the compensation part from the state. So, they are asking for the second year of a 5% compensation supplement. They have given us the state portion. This is what we feel it will cost this county with fringe benefits, in order to, to award that 5% increase. Every year, we do put an increase in health insurance, because costs aren't going down. I believe that this board has asked that we go out for RFP, because it's been three years since the last RFP. RFP, so we'll be attempting to do that in the spring, because we never get our rates until July anyway. The third line, if you remember, in this year's approved budget, there is $50,000 for a compensation study. This is for all of our non-teachers, because, oh, and I did want to go back to the first slide, the first number. We are not getting, the one-time distribution was not included in the governor's proposed budget. It was not. I've been in touch with Rob Waksom, and I received this today from Lynn Lewis's office. Senator Lewis will be pushing legislation and appropriations this year for full COCA funding for the shore. Could you send me some updated information, numbers, and talking points in the same vein as the past year? Which, of course, we will be doing that, and we are working with Rob as well. But Rob says when it's not included in the governor's budget, it's all that much harder to get it introduced by legislation. So, when I considered the 5% compensation supplement, I did not reduce teacher salaries by the previous distributions that we have received. That is, that would be giving them a 5% increase on the level that they are receiving, having already received the distribution. So, we're 1.4 short on the distribution. I could technically take that from the 1.9, take that back, and then give them 5% on the reduced amount. That could be a board decision, but I don't think that this board is in, in favor of that, or at least at this point. So, I, I wanted to say that that is not taking back that one-time distribution. It is keeping the money in the teacher's salaries and giving them a 5% raise, as well as all employees getting a 5% raise. So, now going back to the phase in the compensation study, one of the salary scales that we look at each and every year is the teacher salary scale. So, it actually has been adjusted, I think, every year, except maybe two or three, since I've been here. But we have this study out for everybody that's not a teacher, because those limits were set and starting salaries were set 15, 20 years ago, and have not changed since then. So, when that study comes back, this money is to address some of the greatest need areas, and as a result of that study. Also, when Mr. Holland and I had a meeting with Mr. Mason of the county, he has a similar study out right now. And he has said that three years implementation is not acceptable. He is going to go for a two-year implementation, and he has put 10% in to cover those changes. So, I had to come up with a reasonable number gathered by process. So, what I did is figure approximately 5% for money in there to address the areas of greatest need that comes as a result of this study that we're having procured. The IEP compliance specialist, that is being funded right now from ARC funds, which is American Rescue Plan, which is part of ESR, but it is not the same part of ESR that has been extended to September of '24. This specific ARC funds end September of '23. So, that is to continue with that position that we have in there with the grant funds. And lastly, what is in there at this point is an elementary alternative education teacher and instructional assistant. So, are we glad to take any questions, or if anybody has any questions on any of the budgets that you've seen or any of this?
Okay. All right. I realize that one of the things we're going to be doing, and next week, is going to be really talking over the details of what we have already received, where each school's requests, and we've got to figure out how we're going to be able to meet, meet priorities, because there were some very good requests that came from the individual schools, as well as from the departments. So, I know, I know this is going to, you know, we can take this, go through this, and then next week, we will have that full discussion, because the meeting is dedicated only to the budget next week. But, I would, have any?
And I would like to point out that we, we have had conversations with the instructional department, and their number-one priority is to not have teachers go backwards in salary and have them receive 5%. So, you see the, you see the dollar amount there. But that's not all teachers, that's for all staff, because that is the way that the state funding is awarded. But it is not to take away the one-time distribution, and that was their number-one priority. But it is not to take away the one-time distribution, and that was their number-one priority because we're trying to keep...
Of course, that's, that's our...
Right. But that, that's why you don't see a whole lot of items listed. And, you know, pretty much, they're all human resource-type items listed.
So to make sure the board's clear on this, the issue here is COCA. I mean, that's, that's the elephant. Last governor had it in his budget. This government does not have it in his budget.
Correct.
I thought it was a state study, but I couldn't, that was what we were told.
Last year, when it came out, they continued it, remember, we got it one year, and then we got it one more year, which is the year we're in right now. And the wording was that they would wait to see the results of a J L A R C study. And our reaction to that is that we have never seen a J L A R C study completed in that short timeframe, and here we are.
So the issue is, if somehow our representatives don't lay a hand, whatever you want to call it, twist arms to get it in there, all the requests that we've seen are kind of moot unless we're willing to go backwards in the pay scale.
Okay, but that one point nine does not take the money away from, that was given.
Right.
Right.
But I'm saying...
Being that priority, you see how much we have available, and you see how much is there. So we, we may have to look at cutting programs or existing funding in different areas in the operational budget in order to preserve that.
That's my point, I want to make sure the board gets it. We can look at the list that we got forever. But if we do not get COCA, this list, they don't arrive.
If we do not get COCA, which is slim.
Yeah.
You know, because as Rob said, if it's not in, in there, it's hard to print it in there. It's one thing to fight for keeping it, but it's another thing if, if it's not in there. You know, that's why I have it at the top.
Yeah, I just wanted to realize, if we sit here and argue for an hour over twelve dollars, if COCA doesn't come, we have one thing to fund, and that's salaries. Or we're going backwards on the pay.
Exactly. The, the teachers.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, we look forward.
I've got a question. What about the money that we have? What about the, the access money that we have? Could we use some of that to pay for some of these things?
When you're talking about contingency or carryforward, is that what you're...
Say it again.
I'm assuming you're talking about carryforward money?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so carryforward money is not a, a constant revenue stream. It's a one-time money.
What I'm saying, that some of the stuff is, like, the rest of the Arcadia High School, some softball fields, and the, the scoreboards and stuff. Arcadia Middle School wants to have their parking lot strike and things like that. Can we use some of that money towards this?
You can, but at the last several meetings ago, he did address all of our carryforward money and assign it to projects.
So that'll bring the balance down to zero.
If they come in as, you know, there were multiple levels of, of estimates on that.
So that thirteen million or whatever will be down to zero?
Yes. You all approved plans that would spend that money.
Would be able to, as we get updates, we will also be, that would be at some point, somebody on this team, this...
And, and as estimates come in on that...
We will have those discussions.
Right. As estimates come in on that, if something comes in less, or as we're going, we're starting the phase now, where we'll start to estimate our salaries to get us through the year to see if we have any money, the first place that we look on that is from these budget requests. That's why they're very important, even if they're not being funded at this point in time. The first place that we look and make recommendations to you all is from these requests that, that people have spent a lot of time and effort in putting together. And that's the first place that we would go, would be to the, the schools and departments' budget requests for, for one-time, for one-time money.
I'm not sure if this is the time, but I would like to add something to your list, and that is two full-time athletic trainers.
At this point, we will have those things next week.
Okay, I just want to make sure I don't want to wait too long and then say, oh, you should send that last name.
Next week, you have a meeting.
No, next week is...
Okay. And that's when all of, is it when you receive next week, it'll be the funding request. And then that's when you all add items, take away items, whatever discussions. And then it will be the school board's funding request that'll be taken to the February, I think it's seventh, public hearing.
Okay. All right, item six point oh three, health update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to give a quick COVID update. In Akron County, as far as teachers, we have two that tested positive. We have zero staff out. We have a total of eleven students, and kids that were sent home today, there was twenty-two throughout all schools. And according to our dashboard, we are still in the high level. However, the case count today was two. And when I talked to JJ today, she said that the outbreaks are resolving. There's, there's sporadic cases around, but we're getting better. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item seven point oh one, superintendent's report.
Yes, I want to thank Bobby Bennett, the maintenance. They've been out in this cold weather. Came up here yesterday. We've got the playground behind here. They're working at it. And I tell you, these, these playgrounds, they're going to be phenomenal, the way they're designed. And, and we're going to move up where Florida and North Carolina, their playgrounds are going to be like ours. And I'm excited about it. I'm proud of the students, teachers, staff, and the discretion with the schedule change. I'm proud, remarkable, transportation, how the kids are behaving. And like I said, it's unfortunate. I had made the decision, but I'm very pleased on what the student body's doing. Very pleased with it. One thing I'd like to say, you know, this is budget time, and, and we're going to be working. I want to thank Claire Chandler, that family that's been behind closed doors with Mike Mason, the E R P. We've been working on that constantly, and, but I want to thank, thank those two ladies. And like I said, we're academically, we're getting reviewed in some of our schools. And I'll say this too, you know, we are accredited, but it's a learning loss. And I will say this, when I took over, it was eight schools unaccredited. We have eleven. And our, our academic team is working around the clock. Ms. Taylor, Katie, and Dr. Hall working around the clock. So, you know, we've been out of school like we have. It is a learning loss. And I would like to congratulate Jeff Smith, the superintendent at Hampton. I've been doing very well the last eight years since I retired from Hampton. He's been a mentor committee, helped me out, and he dealt. And we're looking forward to seeing them at equal. That's all I have to say.
Okay, this is one of the words you were saying, eight of the credit schools.
We had eight when we started here eight years ago.
On the credit?
No, no, we had eight credit, excuse me, eight of credit.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wish the board a close meeting.
All right, board will adjourn to close meeting as allowed by section two point two dash three seven one one code in Virginia. Subsection A one Personnel, subsection A two Student Management, and subsection A seven Equal.
Let's remove the second, and we're going full screen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I want you to carry on.